2017 Capital Improvements Advisory Committee Meeting to Order. Second item on our agenda, Hearing of Residents. I don't see any residents here that have signed up to speak. So we'll move on to item number three. Considering make a recommendation to City Council on the land use assumption report and capital improvements plan that establishes the basis for a roadway impact fee.
Very good.
You're up to bat.
Eddie Haas with Freezing Nichols. Glad to see you all again. It's been awhile as we convene as the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee for the possible consideration of roads, but yet here we are tonight. And what we want to talk about is the reports that were submitted to you last week, week before last regarding the draft land use assumptions, as well as the draft capital improvements plan. So we have to advance this thing. And so I think everyone here was on the committee before when we last met, last May of 2015? Okay, so you're new to impact fees. Well, in a nutshell, impact fees, roadway impact fees, it's a one-time charge to new development for the cost of specific facilities identified in an impact fee CIP. But it's a charge to new development for their fair share of impact onto the cost of infrastructure in the city. And what impact, what this program will do is it's a funding mechanism for helping to determine who's going to pay for what. And we're leveling the playing field by identifying a service unit, traffic generation, the vehicle mile as a service unit, leveling the playing field by, based on travel characteristics of specific developments. In other words, site comes into town that's a very heavy traffic generator, the more impact they create on the system, the higher their impact, impact fee would be. What's important to think about is, as a finance tool, we're going to talk about the CIP and you'll see some cost numbers that will seem kind of big, and that's what it's going to cost to put infrastructure on the ground. And so the impact fee program is designed to, for you all to ultimately make a recommendation on what fair share should development contribute in the cost of that, of implementing the infrastructure. So the important thing is that someone's going to pay for this, and if new development's not going to contribute a portion of that cost, then the remainder of that burden falls on the existing tax base. So, the program is predicated on a forecast of how we grow as a community over a 10-year window. We'll talk about land use assumptions, a capital improvements plan that's designed to address the growth over the 10-year window and/or beyond. And then we'd like to conclude tonight with a discussion, questions you might have regarding the draft reports that we've submitted to you all for consideration. By way of development process, really, and we talked about this, you might recall our very first meeting where we had the impact fee 101, going through some of the nuances of roadway impact fees, but we talked about how we were going to grow as a community. We'll talk about that here again. But that growth rate really forms the basis for our 10-year projection. Where do we see ourselves growing in this next 10 years, so that we can use that as the denominator in the cost per service unit calculation? We'll talk about how all that works here shortly. So, by way of process, the development of land use assumptions, this draft report that's been developed to tell us how we think we're going to grow over the 10-year window, the associated capital improvements plan that we are envisioning to use as part of the impact fee program. Where this goes is it goes forward to, subject to your recommendation that we hold a public hearing, that we're going to have a public hearing to discuss these two components. The impact fee law requires for new systems that you have two public hearings. First one to consider, how are we going to grow? What's the capital improvements plan? Then the second public hearing is where the discussion is of the impact fee and policy considerations of what does the city desire to collect from new development for the impact fee. That becomes item four. Once we have the public hearing on the LUA and CIP, we do our final calculations on the cost per service unit, prepare the technical reports. We'll meet with you all to discuss policy issues, and then we go to that final public hearing for the public to weigh in on impact fee programs and then adopt an impact fee ordinance, if that becomes the desire of the community. You might recall, for those that were on the committee, the advisory committee in our previous meeting, roadway impact fees are a little different from other impact fee programs. The law says that impact fees for roads can only be collected within the city limits. On top of that, service areas or benefit zones that are devised can be no greater than six miles across. So we've divided the community up into four service zones. Number one being basically along I-35 in the far northeast. Service area two, from the northern sector, northern city limits, far north down to just basically more or less Schaefer, somewhere between 78 and Schaefer Road. Service area three, the bulk of the southern sector of the community. And a smaller service area four, out in the far western, southwestern portion of the community. The reason for service areas is to ensure that if the city's collecting fees from new development, that those monies are going to pay for improvements that are within the vicinity of where all that growth's occurring. So that's why we have these service areas. And the monies that are collected, if the program is adopted, there will be four separate bank accounts, monies that will go into each one of those bank accounts, so only those funds can be used for those projects that are specifically identified in the impact fee CIP. Okay, item one this evening, this is the land use assumptions for the community. We have been working with staff for several months now in the development of the LUA. But again, this, the land use assumption, the LUA, is a forecast of how we see growth occurring over the 10-year window. More importantly, we're looking at a couple of things. Not only how have we been growing in the past, but based on development activity and potential projects that staff sees coming within, in the near term, considering those things, but then also considering your, you know, your future land use plan, building permit data, other projections by other agencies on growth with insurance. We kind of take all that into consideration when we're looking at the, at trends. But we're looking at two factors, population and employment. Population being residential growth anticipated to occur in the community, and then the employment growth for the non-residential piece. Reason we break out non-residential and then further break it out into basic service retail or industrial, office and commercial, is because they all have different trip generation characteristics, and we want to kind of have a general accurate forecast of how we see the LUA that gets converted to trip activity, so we have a little refined method for the cost per service unit calculation that will come at the end of the process. But the biggest thing is that the LUA really serves as the basis for our CIP development. The roots of the CIP is obviously your thoroughfare plan, the plan that was adopted fairly recently, and we'll talk about that CIP here shortly. This is documented in the LUA report, but how has shirts been growing in the past? The graph here depicts since year 2000, kind of compound annual growth rates from years between 2000 to '05, '05 to '10, and then 10 to, 10 through 2014. Compound annually, you can see in the five-year increment periods, 4.6, 3.54, 4.5. You've been growing at a fairly strong clip since 2000, and by way of how the, how agencies see continued growth, you can see the projections from 2015, yeah, 2015 on through 2030. We have several different projections that have been identified, Texas Water Development Board, we have census growth data, data from AMPO that we considered, all those, and then some forecasts, low city forecast, mid and high, that the city had prepared. All those range with a projected growth of anywhere from 2.8 to 3.5. Kind of talked about that in our first meeting, but the, kind of the expectation was that 3.5 seemed about right for the next 10-year window. The law says we've got to update the program at least every five years, so we have 3.5, it's really 4.0, well, in five years, we'll take another look at it again. But that doesn't mean that you can't look at LUA sooner. Law just says at least every five years. So, if things were to change dramatically, and there was a desire or need to look at it in two years, then that could certainly be done. The general consensus was that 3.5 seemed about right for this projection, so we then have a base number, we have a base population number of a little over 40,000, at a 3.5% compound annual growth rate, has a resultant forecast through year 2027 of a little over, or a little under 57,000. We then worked with staff to determine where growth was anticipated to occur, more specifically down at a real finite level. What's depicted here in the image is traffic analysis, traffic analysis zones. These were these little geographic areas that were also used in the travel demand modeling process that we used as part of the thoroughfare, thoroughfare plan, in creating the forecast for what would we see as ultimate need for the thoroughfare plan. But these little geographic areas is how we visited with staff on where did we see growth occurring, specifically over the 10-year window. And this table here summarizes, it's in the report, tables six and seven, page 17 of the land use assumptions report, that have the detail on the population growth by service area. So, we're seeing the population grow, again, about a little over 16,000, 16 and a half thousand over the 10-year window, but by service area, looking at the far right column, the net growth, you can see a bulk of that growth's anticipated to occur in the southern sector. There's a lot of anticipation for future growth, and this is only within your current city limits, not outside, only within the current city limits, but a substantial amount of growth anticipated to occur over the 10-year window. You certainly have a fair share of growth along the I-35 corridor, far eastern sector, 2,900, 3,000 people in service area one, almost 4,000 people in the core of the community there in service area two, very minimal growth in that far southwestern sector that we see, or at least the initial 10-year window there, roughly 50 some odd folks in the 10-year planning period. By way of employment, same kind of scenario, except a little bit reversed. We're looking at 10-year growth, far right column depicting the net growth. We see a lot of growth occurring along the I-35 corridor. This is your commercial, retail, a lot of those numbers rose to the top. It's detailed in the appendices, I'm sorry, in table six of the, of that land use assumptions report, but you can see a significant amount of growth, employment growth occurring, service areas one and two, not so much in service area three, and very minimal in the far southwestern sector of the community. Kind of a nutshell of where we see growth happening over 10 years and where it's occurring. Wanted to answer any questions that you might have. As it relates to the LUA, we were very specific in documenting the methodological approach in that land use assumptions report, the base conditions, the projected conditions, and then the summary tables there. So I could answer any questions you might have on the LUA, if you have any. Mr. Nurse?
Playing a little catch-up here. When we were looking at some of the charts, I understand that the ETJ is, you show it, but it's not part of the, but there's a couple of little areas that are indicated that it's, that are colored differently, and it's down the key, it says excluded.
Yeah, so, in setting up the program, the anticipation is, as annexation occurs, or as the city continues to grow, and the ultimate picture is defined as ultimately your ETJ, we wanted to think about what service area would they come into? So when we develop that zonal structure, that's only for setting up the service area boundaries. So, in the actual program, if implemented, this is what the service area structure looks like.
Right, but you've got a couple of little pieces in those ETJs that are labeled as being, they're colored differently than the ETJ, and that says they're excluded for some reason.
This one?
Back where you, back where we see the ETJs. So you see up here in service area one, in that lower right corner, there's a...
Oh, yeah, this is that...
It's the distance was a problem?
Oh, that's right.
So we left an...
That's right, it was. It stretched just beyond the six miles, but this area down here, there was minimal development anticipated in that area, and so we thought, okay, that won't have much of an effect.
Is that six miles, is it a square?
It's a circle.
It's a circle.
We treat it as a circle, yeah. And so what that, what we're saying here, and the reason we're doing that, is new development's going to come in, whether it's residential or non-residential, they're going to be generating traffic. They may not be coming only from service area two, they'll be coming from other places, but what we're saying is that there'll be an impact on the network, and so facilities that are identified for those, that's how we'll collect and pay for those.
Thank you.
With the biggest part of our growth being in service sector three, looking on the land use assumptions, you talk about the crossvine development and the impact of that. And, you know, what we're looking at doing is changing our land use assumptions to be less dense on the areas west of 1518, and increasing density on the east side of 1518. I guess my question is, you know, have you accommodated that into this plan?
Yeah, so, basically, as we were anticipating a 3.5% growth, and working with staff of where that allocation was going to come from, in what development activity, regardless of the intensity on whether either side, fortunately, it's all in that one service boundary, but we've accommodated that 3.5% growth, and then, more importantly, allocated where we thought was going to occur, and/or based on development activity that is anticipated. So, but, if growth actually changes, if there's a change in the comprehensive plan or a change in land use patterns, be able to capture that in the next update, okay? So, the beauty of the program is that we're quantifying growth, right, how we're seeing in 10 years, but then more importantly, that's going to translate into a unit cost. We'll talk about the implication there on the unit cost. It shouldn't, it won't have a big effect, is what I'm saying. We can certainly come back to any other questions you might have, if you want to keep moving on, or...
Richard? All right, I guess let's continue on, and we'll come back if we need to.
So, there were two reports that were submitted to you all for review and consideration. The second one deals with the capital, the roadway impact fee capital improvements plan, the IF-SIP is what we call it. And so, an impact fee CIP is different from your regular capital improvements plan. These are improvements that are capacity additions to your roadway network. It's rooted in your thoroughfare plan. It's any facility that's classified as an arterial class facility or a collector class facility by law, that's on your thoroughfare plan, your adopted thoroughfare plan, can be considered into the program. And so, these are projects that are either, maybe have been built recently, and the desire is to recoup the excess costs of that capacity that's available, or projects yet to be built. In our program, we only have projects that are yet to be built. There are a couple of projects that recently been finished, Schertz Parkway, the decision was, we're not going to even try to recoup any of that cost, since that's been around for a little bit. So we're mainly going forward in new facilities that are needed, the cost of replacing facilities, but then building toward ultimate thoroughfare plan standard. In terms of cost, the costing that we're identifying is, what's it going to cost to build these facilities? When we actually do the impact fee calculation, the next time we meet, we're only going to be considering the cost that the city is going to be employing. So in other words, if there's a state facility where there may be some other dollars involved, we'll only be considering the portion of cost that the city's contributing. We want to make sure we're not tagging new development for costs that are being picked up by other, by other agencies. Okay, so the, we use the land use assumptions, and we, that's pop employment projection for the 10-year window, but then we've got to convert that to the unit of measure that we're using for the roadway impact fee, that is the vehicle mile. What we've done is, it's not explained in this report, it will be in the final report, but the land use equivalency table is what will be used to quantify impact of new growth. In other words, 500 dwelling units of residential will have a corresponding service unit generation on a per independent unit, a per dwelling unit basis. Most non-residential uses will be on a per thousand square feet. We've simply said, for the four general categories, residential, office, commercial, industrial, office, commercial, we've used the general categories that will be in your equivalency table as a basis for how much anticipated vehicle miles of growth are going to occur. So, we've quantified those main, those main components for those four, and so the equivalency table contains, for the vehicle miles, it has trip rate information, and trip length information, there's the vehicle mile. But more importantly, the trip rate information's been adjusted to take out traffic activity that might be classified as pass by or diverted trips. In other words, you're at the office, and you're going home, and you're already on the road, and you're going to stop off at a convenience store to pick some things up, or make a diverted trip to go stop by HEB to pick up some things. That's traffic that's already on the system. So we've adjusted trip rates to focus on the primary trip. Where data's available, we've netted out that. So all we're reflecting is what is the true cost, or the true impact that will be borne by development, okay, new development. So, the base trip rate has made that adjustments. Then we have the trip length data that is then cut in half, because you have two trip ends, to and from, we wanted to make sure we're not double charging. So, the equivalency table will be tailored to two shirts, to account for those two items, which gives a conservative approach on VMP generation for future development. Bottom line, we use that VMT table to quantify projected growth that's going to be listed in tables, tables 13, tables four, and appendix B of the report. The graphic here depicts, and we'll talk about the projected growth here in a minute, but the graphic here depicts your thoroughfare plan. This is what was adopted several months ago, on the facilities that would be eligible. And basically, all the facilities highlighted there in, that are principal, secondary, residential and commercial, those arterial and collector class facilities, those are facilities that we can consider in the program, okay? We did look at incorporating the entire thoroughfare plan into the program. The reason for that is, we want to give the city ultimate flexibility in where development's occurring. By law, if we were to take an incremental approach and only identify certain facilities, developer comes in and builds a section of arterial street that's not on the impact fee CIP, the city's not required to give him credit, because it's not on the impact fee program. But, the notion was, we want to do two things. We want to be fair to new development that's coming into the community, and we want to build to the ultimate standard of what the thoroughfare network needs to be. So, the idea was, if we put all of the facilities in there, we take, we have, we give the city flexibility, we give new development flexibility, that if they're building or contributing toward a road, they get the appropriate credits against that development as part of that process. So, we have included the full thoroughfare, the full thoroughfare plan. When we see the cost, we're not going to be responsible for all that cost right off the bat, but it's important to know that of that total cost, we're only going to be considering what is needed in the 10 years. We'll talk about that here and now. More importantly, so we're considering the full thoroughfare network, that's depicted there in the graphic, but we have made some omissions. I alluded to the fact that we did not include Schertz Parkway, did not include 3009, that was borne by textile. We felt that those facilities are already there, we're not going to even attempt to recoup any excess capacity that we could, decided to leave those out, we're just mainly going forward. More importantly, we omitted that section of FM 3009, south of State Highway 78, 78 through Schaefer. We felt that if that thing ever gets built, it will not happen within the next 10 years, we thought, let's just take it out of the program for right now. Doesn't mean we can't amend the CIP to include it later, but for right now, for the initial system, we felt like it's going to be a very high-cost item, that would drive that cost per service unit up. We don't see it happening 10 years, let's just wait. And so, by that, but with that notion, we can always add it in, in later. Okay? Okay, so, what I thought I'd do is I'd go through the, a summary of each service area. We talked about the projected growth that's anticipated to occur. In service area one, based on the LUA, we're anticipating to have 10,461 vehicle miles of growth. These are summarized in table four of the CIP report, but then more importantly, in appendix B, it lays out that table of how we derive that, in the appendices. So we're anticipating growth of about 10,500, say. The amount of capacity being supplied, and those are the projects that are highlighted in red, we've labeled those, so we have a project number to define the projects, but the amount of capacity that's being provided by those projects in red, which comport with your current city limits, is 45,617 vehicle miles. There are some tables in the CIP report that, I think it's tables, table six, where there is some traffic that's already out on some of these, on some of these roads that are ultimately going to be CIP roads. So, we want to take that out of the calculation to give us net capacity being provided by the impact fee CIP. We further reduce the capacity by any deficiencies that might be present on the thoroughfare system. You might recall about two years ago, we had about 32 counts that were laid out throughout the city. There were, we did define, currently, there are some system deficiencies, looking for my list here. Believe it was FM, FM, portions of FM 70, or State Highway 78, had some deficiencies. Now let me just go to the appendices, appendix A. Let's see, appendix A, let's see, portions of FM 1103 are currently running deficient, that's service area one, there's some segments of FM 1518 that are running deficient, service area three, portions of FM 1518, that's the other half, and, there's another one, yeah, I guess, State Highway 78. Well, bottom line is, there are some deficiencies in the system, and to yield a conservative number, we said, okay, this is how much of the CIP is provided, capacity-wide, by service area. Any traffic that's currently on CIP roadways, we're netting that out with a calculation. Further, we're taking out any system deficiencies, so we have a conservative net growth being made available for future growth.
Can you further explain on what existing deficiencies mean? Is that traffic, is that a roadway that is overburdened, at its current capacity, or...
Yeah, so the program's predicated on the PNP power, which will occur from, anywhere from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Tube counts, we've quantified through a tube count, how much traffic is currently running on a, on a segment of road, relative to the length of the segment of road, how much theoretical capacity on your existing network. If there's an deficiency, we've just summed it up, and by service area, we're netting it out of the calculation. So yes, there are some segments of those roads that are currently running deficient, okay? That's link-level deficiency. Operationally, at intersections, it might be a little bit different, we're worried about big ticket, and that's overall capacity, okay? So, we do have some deficiencies that we're netting out, and those were quantified in table six of the report. So, service area one, there's VMT projected of about 10,500 vehicle miles, and that'll consume about 25% of that capacity, that net capacity that's being made available. Talk about that here in a second. Service area two, again, projects highlighted in red, they're numbered correspondingly in the tables, table seven, so you can, and in appendix C, that you can clearly see the project number, what are the lanes we're adding, length of project, functional class, how much capacity of those being provided. But in service area two, we've got almost 18,000 vehicle miles of projected growth. We've got net capacity of about almost 18,000. This one's matched perfectly. In other words, your thoroughfare plan and the projected growth in service area two are just, are situated correctly. So, we're going to be consuming about 99% of that capacity, anticipated in this 10-year window. So your question might be, well, okay, what about future growth, beyond 10 years? Well, what will happen in the next update is, some of that capacity will be consumed by growth, leaving less net capacity. If we're continuing to grow, the cost of that remaining, the remaining capacity is going to drive that cost per service unit down. So it'll get cheaper over time, because all we're doing is we're identifying your current thoroughfare plan. We're not going to build above the thoroughfare plan that's currently adopted by, that was recently adopted by the city. Okay? So this one's matched perfectly for this 10-year window. Service area three, we're anticipating almost 15,000 vehicle miles of growth of the projects identified, highlighted there in red. You'll see some segments that are portions, you know, little segments here, like project 55, 57. It's only because those segments of road are currently in your city limits. There are segments of road like 51, or I think in the far northeast in service area one, where a portion of the road is in, and the other portion is out in civillo, so we've only quantified that portion of road that's currently within your city limits. So, projected growth of about 15,000 VMT, capacity being provided, total capacity 46,000, traffic that's already out there consuming some of that, leaves a net of about 38,000. Still, we have plenty of capacity to cover that anticipated growth, 39%, that'll be, as forecasted to be consumed over this 10-year window. Finally, in service area four, we have very little growth anticipated to occur, considering the projects from the thoroughfare plan, and very little traffic that's out there. Total VMT of capacity provided, 3,300, little traffic out there, there's about 3,200 vehicle miles of capacity, 124 vehicle miles, a lot of growth, but we're only going to need 4% of that capacity being provided. So, what's important about that is, and this is the summary... So what's important about that is, and this is the summary, here's the projected growth, here's the net capacity being provided, this is how much of that capacity we're going to need in the future. And why is that so important? Because in the continuation of this column, the total, the total cost of the CIP, which is highlighted in appendix, appendix C by service area, and you can see, relatively expensive. Service area one, a little over $98 million of total improvements to get to thoroughfare standard. The net cost of that, in other words, traffic's already consuming some of that capacity, we're losing some of that cost because it's already burned, leaves a net cost of the CIP of about $92 million. But because we only need 25% to cover our growth, we can only consider 22.7 million of that $92 million with the projects. Doesn't mean we'll lose the remainder, that will just be excess that will recover as the program rolls into the next window. What's going to be important in our next meeting, of this 22.7 million, how much, how much of that cost should be borne by the developer? That's going to be the ultimate question. Someone's going to pay for that 22.7 million. Do you want new development to pick up the full cost of that? Or is there going to be a policy decision that the city should contribute, should pick up a portion of that cost? That's where it's ultimately going to go. Okay?
So I assume, from looking at the numbers, that using, again, service area one, to, to build that thoroughfare plan the way we want it, the street widths and all that, is $98 million.
That's correct.
And I understand that of that, only 23 million is due to new growth.
Is going to get, is going to be in this 10-year window.
Yes. So this, so somebody else is already picking up that 70-some million to build that road, if, if we were to...
That's if we decided, starting tomorrow, we have unlimited cash, we're going to start building it. But in reality, we're going to be implementing the plan over time. So we're not, in, in reality, we're going to be building portions of, segments of road, depending on where the demand's occurring within each service boundary, implementing those segments of road, or new development's going to pay for that and want credit for what they put into the program. That's the way the system's designed. Okay? But over the 10-year window, we'll need 22 million of that to cover that 10-year growth. Okay?
And did, did you include in these estimates the fact that this is a 10-year projection? So are, did we anticipate costs going up and things like that?
Yeah, so the picture, the costing, which are, you, you might have noticed in the, in appendix C, they're pretty detailed. There's a cost sheet for each one. We've used unit costing, that's in today's prices. We're not inflating any of those prices to project any kind of future cost, because the rub's going to be, we've, a lot of these projects are planned. When they actually get built, if it, if it costs less than what we forecasted, and there's a difference of greater than 10%, it puts the city in a potential refund situation, and we don't want that. So we've gone conservative on the unit costing, based on 12-month averages, things like that, looking at right-of-way, appraisal district value of cost per square foot for, for land. So we've gone, in most cases, 75 cents a square foot, trying to be conservative. We will hear the argument from new, from new development, that right-of-way's probably going to be worth a lot more than what we've considered. We're playing it safe here, and so if we want to ratchet it up to what we think, what, what they think it ought to be, we can always plug those numbers in, but in the end, it just drives, it'll just drive the cost up. This will be, this will become particularly important in proportionality assessments. That'll be a side study that staff will be conducting. Are we exacting too much from new development? If they question that, we'll have this study as a basis to perform the technical analysis of that proportionality assessment. Okay? I hope that answers your question. Is that, yeah, okay. Okay, service area two, again, all the costs are laid out. In, in table seven of the CIP report, the summary is that we're anticipating the overall cost of the IFSIP, 238 million, $230 million to build the full thoroughfare plan network. That's the actual cost. That does not include debt service. Debt service is eligible for consideration. We're doing the finance study right now. We'll be able to consider that, if desired, the cost of debt service, because that's going to be a cost that will be borne by somebody. And so it'll be 230 million plus to build the full thoroughfare plan. Okay? Any questions on the, the IFSIP? We're just mainly want, I'm kind of gone, I've gone ahead, you know, talking about this, the kinds of things we're going to ultimately going towards as the policy, but mainly, your charge tonight is, is it appropriate for this full CIP to be considered? The LUA to be considered, and the full CIP to be considered. Then we're going to be running through the true calculations for the, the cost per service unit, ultimately leading toward the impact fee consideration. Commissioner Pinchorn?
The total CIP cost that you had, the 98.8, that's the total build-out of that thoroughfare plan in that area.
That service area.
So we're not assuming that in 10 years, it'll be totally built out.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
We're assuming that, that $22.7 million of it will be built out in 10 years.
That's, that's, that's the goal. We want to, we want to build enough capacity to cover that growth.
Okay.
Yeah. And it, and it might not be that it's one full four-lane divided segment, it might be that we're phasing it. We're going to build half of a four-lane divided over this segment of the community, we're building a portion in another, you know, so it's not going to be full segments at one time, it's going to be as appropriate. Important thing is that we're quantifying how much it's going to cost to put this capacity on the ground, so that the cost necessitated, that's the true cost that new development could bear, that's what's calculated, and that's what gets considered in this cost per service unit calculation, calculation that we'll talk about in our next meeting.
So we're just establishing a ground rule for how much to charge if there is a charge?
That's correct.
And have, and have a bunch of data to back it up?
That's correct.
As opposed to pulling a number out of the air?
That's correct. We're going to grow by X amount in 10 years. We're considering a CIP that's ultimately going to be building toward our ultimate thoroughfare plan. These are the, the basic building blocks if we want to consider an impact fee program. We want to take this to the public, as part of a public hearing going forward, so that we can calculate that, then we can consider, should we, should we implement the impact fee program? Yeah. Okay? We could certainly come back and talk any specifics, if you'd like, on costing, things like that. So where we are by way of process, we, we do have a schedule that's been developed. We, we are working toward a public hearing in November, just after the Thanksgiving holidays. There are noticing requirements that you have to publish these reports, make available to the public, at least 30 days. The noticing for publishing is going to be on the 27th, so subject to your approval that we advance the LUA and CIP, this is what'll follow on next, noticing for this, this public hearing. There will also be a resolution by the city council calling for a public hearing. That is slated for October 24th. Then there would be the noticing in the paper, then the public hearing. Okay?
November 28th meeting will be council meeting?
That will be the city council meeting, that's correct. And it'll, it'll consider these two items, LUA and the CIP. Going forward from there, we'll be, we will then conduct the impact fee cost calculation. We talked about that cost necessitated by growth. The actual cost per service unit calculation will be the cost of needed capacity divided by the, the service units of growth over the 10-year window. Summarize here in this picture, if we have this amount of capacity that's available in the CIP, we have some traffic that's already out there, we have some deficiencies, that means we're only considering this portion of the CIP, that's that net portion of the CIP. Oh, but if we only need, say, 60% of that cost, then this is the portion of the cost that we're going to consider in the impact fee calculation, straight cost per service unit calculation. This excess capacity will roll over into the next calculation. We don't lose it. Okay? Okay? So for those of you that were here in May of 2015, we talked about impact fee basics, the growth rates. Here we are with the LUA and the CIP, and where we're going is our next meeting in January, January, when in January? It will be January 3rd, we'll, I'm sorry, January 10th. January 10th, we'll meet to talk about the cost per service unit calculation, what are, what will be an impact fee for a typical single-family residence. But then more importantly, we'll be talking about what, what kind of collection rate should we consider from new development? In other words, we're going to quantify the cost per service unit, how much of that cost per service unit should the new development bear? They don't bear it, how much the existing taxpayer pick up? Okay? And your final task will be a letter to the city council on a, an appropriate collection rate. Should it be 50% of max? Should it be 30% of max? The reason I say it that way is because we have four service areas, so we're going to have four different numbers on the cost per service unit. So we'll, we'll be talking about this. Should we collect a, a rate that's similar between the service areas? So on this side of the street, single-family residence is paying $1,500 per unit versus this side that might be paying 600. We'll, we'll talk about those and what we might want to do. Would we want to consider a separate collection rate, residential versus non-residential? Some cities collect higher on the non-residential side versus residential side, others have flipped the other way. Should we implement the program in stages? Adopt something low, year one, then stair-step it up, collection rate over five years? Those are all kinds of policy considerations. Okay? Where we are is the two building blocks for the impact fee calculation, that's going to be a technically derived number. Here's the max you can charge. Then we get into the policy discussion of what should new development bear, portion that cost should new development bear.
Is there a perspective on what has been done elsewhere?
Yes. We will capture some benchmarking from other communities that have impact fee programs. New Braunfels has one, Sibolo has impact fees. So we'll probably put a, pull a little table together. What does a single-family residence cost in these communities? Based on the maximum here in Shirts, what do you want to consider? You know, if the maximum is that we could charge 70% of max, you know, it could be a fee here, how is that relative to some of your neighbors? Lockhart's got a program in place, you know? So those will be some of the, and we get this question all the time, we call it benchmarking.
Sibolo has a roadway impact fee?
I do, I believe they do. I know, I know they have water wastewater, yeah, I think they, they do have roadway. Yeah.
How long have these been in existence? Not in Sibolo, but I mean, nationwide, statewide?
Oh, they're, they're nationwide. In 88 state legislation, 1980 was when the impact fees were adopted in Texas. So the first impact fee program was El Paso in 1989, then Arlington followed in 91, Farmers Branch 91.
So do we have any historical data on some of these older cities that have been using it, how, how it's done for them? How it's worked or not worked?
99% of the methodological approach that we're presenting to you is the, is the methodological approach that, that communities have undertaken in Texas. It's been challenged, it's been proven, it's the vehicle mile during the PNP hour, that's kind of the standard. So we, we have been asked, well, why don't you consider daily, or impact fee on daily trips rather than peak hour trips? Well, we're, we're putting down roads to cover the peak hour, the, the typical PNP hour. We don't want to build road to cover daily traffic, we'll be putting down a lot of concrete. All we want to do is cover the PNP hour at an operational level service or an adequacy level service D, typical threshold for most communities, no more, no less. And so the PNP hour is what most cities design their roadways for. That's what the...
Dr. Pinchorn? If I may, we had a different interpretation of your question. Was it more a function of, take a city that's had these for 20 years, how much have they collected over that time, what roads have they been built? Was it more kind of that?
Well, I was, I was actually, it was kind of more like that, but it was more of a, has this been useful in, in helping fund the roads and, and guiding growth the way the cities wanted growth to go?
So I'll take, so what we can probably do is, we can probably pull a city or two who's had it, that's had it for 20 years, and say, here's kind of how much they've collected a year or over a five-year period, here's the roads they've built, here's how they funded the other roads, to give you a feel for that. I will say this, I don't, and I defer to you, it's an interesting concept that's often talked about, to use impact fees as a growth management tool. I've not known anybody that's really gone at it in terms of a growth management tool in a geographic area. For instance, I haven't seen a city that's really gone hard at it to go, I want to encourage growth in service area one, but not in four. What I have seen are cities say, I got all the residential development I can deal with, we're going to charge up here for that, but I need to bring in industry and jobs, and we're going to bring, we're going to charge down here for that. They've used it to, to encourage land uses, but they've not really gone full out as one could to say, I really want to dictate where and when and what type that I'm familiar with.
That's correct.
But you could, in theory.
Fort Worth recently, they incentivize growth, you know, they're, they're growing rapidly, and they're trying to encourage growth within the Loop 820. So they've reduced fees within the service areas within the loop versus those that are outside. They're still going to provide those facilities, but it's just going to cost a little higher rate by new development to bear the cost there. So it's, you know, there's some incentives, but those are policy considerations to be thinking about.
Right, I understand that, but I'm just, I'm just wondering how, how historically effective the, I'm a fan of impact fees.
Mm-hmm.
My dad was on the Shirts-Sibolo school board in the 60s when they built Samuel Clemens, and from that point on, I became aware of public funding. And in Texas, I thought it was absolutely ludicrous that everybody was playing catch-up to the developers. The school districts were playing catch-up, the counties were playing catch-up, all the developers did was put their road out to the county road and say, "See ya."
That's right.
And I've thought that was ridiculous all my life, and so I'm really excited about the whole idea of impact fees, and I certainly wouldn't want to soak it to the developers either, but I would really like to see, I guess my question was, at what point do you, do you run everybody off if you charge too much? Or, or do you? Do you just make it a better area if you make everybody aware that they're paying their fair share of, of building out a nicer, better thoroughfare with good draining, et cetera?
And that's what most communities strive for, building their thoroughfare plan to their standard. You know, Midlothian, they actually, they got a little nervous, the development community said, oh, we're not going to come here, we'll just go next door to Mansfield or Waukesha Haci because your fees are too high. They were only collecting like 10% of max. So they put a moratorium on it, but they found over the, they implemented them in 99, it has not slowed growth in Midlothian whatsoever. Their curve is still going straight up. So it doesn't run off development, and it's simply, the reality is, this is just a funding mechanism.
Right.
And is it going to cover it all? No, it's not going to cover it all. It'll only cover a portion of that. There'll be other buckets of money that the city will have to dip into to help build these, and so that's what's going to then boil to that policy consideration, how much should, what share should new development, what fair share should new, new development contribute?
And one of the things we'll come back with, again, if it, if it sort of helps, and, you know, we chose not to do it now, but when we kind of come back and we show you that math of, here's that full cost, here's the development, here's what it equates to, we'll run some examples. So we'll say, all right, a typical single-family house in Shirts now, new coming in, this is what they're paying in building permit fees to the city. This is what they typically would pay in a normal service area for water and sewer impact fees to the city and CCMR, SSLGC, and then this is what, depending on you added, would add that, would add to that. And the idea is to give you a few example projects. So if another HEB came in, what might that look like? If we got a small dentist office, what would that look like? And I think that'll help you evaluate that, and it's a judgment call, as Eddie said, but it'll help you evaluate to go, yeah, man, tacking that much on a single-family homes seems more than the market probably can bear, want to pull it down a bit. The other thing is, you have the ability to impose the impact fee, and if you feel like you've gone too high, or if you feel like you've gone too low, that can easily be adjusted without updating the study, because what it'll do is establish your maximum you could charge. So if we go, man, we thought that was going to kill res, and it hadn't slowed it down at all, let's scooch it up a bit, we can come back a year later and do that. So.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, just a, a couple of comments from my end here. You know, we embarked on this journey about three years ago, looking at this. It's been a long time getting here. It's been a long time getting here, you know, it's been a long process and we've learned a lot along the way. You know, the objective tonight is just to, again, establish the baseline that would give us the ability at some point to impose impact fees, the ultimate amount that we could recommend to council, could be zero, it could be the maximum amount, but it would give us the ability to do so going forward. I think that the decision on this from a policy basis is going to be very important for the growth and future of the city. And given the fact that we have one commissioner here that is new to this, we have two commissioners absent tonight, and we have one that will be appointed between now and then, hopefully to replace the current vacancy. What I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners to see if we have a consensus on is that maybe when we have our next meeting in January on this, that the first time we do this, we do it as a workshop discussion item, so we can really discuss it, flesh it out, and bring everybody else up to speed, and then have a following meeting at some point to actually take action on it.
You're referring to the, to impact fees, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's kind of the next steps.
Yes.
We're still at the building blocks, yeah.
So what I'd say maybe is, we would certainly, given the schedule we worked up, if we want to add in another work session discussion, we would be happy to, rather than sort of slide things back, what I'd do is scooch in as much as we want.
Either way.
It can be with staff.
That's correct.
We can bring the consultant in. Happy to do as much as y'all want to kind of keep making you feel comfortable, yeah. What we'd like though is just keep the schedule and not stretch it out, we'd rather add in stuff to keep it on that, but yeah, we can do that.
And to get to that point, we need to get to this point.
Yes.
Just so that I'm clear, when we look at units and we do a multifamily apartment complex?
Yep.
Is that one unit or is that 300 units?
Yeah, so multifamily will be total number of doors.
Total, okay.
Yeah, so like I know that the service unit generation for a single-family residence peak hour is 1.01 or 1.00 now, but a multifamily is like .26, .21.
Okay.
Or unit. So it's on a unit basis, yeah.
Can you go over again what a deficiency is?
Yeah, so we've, since we're dealing with vehicle miles, that's the service unit that we're using to quantify capacity, quantify how much utilization's out on the network, it'll be the same service unit to quantify how much future growth will be or impact by specific development. That's the unit of measure. So we've gone through and we did tube counts, because we wanted to say, hey, look, if there's any, by service area, if there's any deficiency or any links that are running over capacity, we just want to net that out of the CIP. The theory is, we've got a CIP that can provide all this capacity, that'll help to fix that deficiency. So that's consuming some of that, so we're saying that we're just netting that out of the calculation. Existing traffic on a link that's running a little over capacity.
I guess part of my confusion is when we look at, when I look at Appendix A, there's only like six streets that have a deficiency. So does that mean that all of our other streets are fine?
Yeah, so we look mainly at arterial and collector class streets from a link level perspective, and the theoretical capacity that is provided on a per-lane basis based on the kind of facility is, whether it's an arterial class that's a divided or an under-divided facility, or a collector class, they have different carrying capacities. So we have a unit carrying capacity based on a per-lane, times number of lanes gives us total carrying capacity. What we're saying is that in particular segments in Appendix A, I think it was, let me find it real quick, it was, yeah, FM 1103, portions of 1103, I-35 through Old Wiederstein?
Mm-hmm.
That's running deficient, 277 vehicle miles of deficiency. We're just summing up all the deficiencies within that service area, taking it out of that capacity we're providing from the CIP. Okay? In other words, that CIP, when we build it, is going to, in theory, fix that deficiency because now we have other roads that are in place to help address some of that concern.
Maybe again, to be able to sit and listen to your question, it doesn't mean that we don't have congestion at times on other roads that don't show up as deficient. Maybe there's another way to look at it. There are roads that at times, yeah, seams back up, seam congestion, but they may not theoretically show as a deficiency, which is how I took your question a little bit, thinking, we got more than just these that are deficient. And I'm.
I'll deal with it. Something else that happened recently, I believe, on, we talk about freeways and limited access facilities, there's no mention of sidewalks on there. We just added that to the UDC. Do we need to add it to this report?
Oh, actually, we have. So in Appendix, Appendix...
And I'm looking at page 40 where the description is?
Yes, here we are. Yes, that would need to be amended. Typically, since we're focused on the arterial class, arterial collector class, we're building the thoroughfare standard. So what's depicted in the thoroughfare standard is what we're building too. So if on the frontage roads, I think I see, is that some people there on the outside? Or is it arrows? I think it's arrows.
It's arrows, yeah.
Those are facilities by others, tech stats, implementing, but from a active transportation perspective, sometimes it's an important thing to consider other choices beside the vehicle to get around, rather walk on a sidewalk than on grass.
Well, I wondered, the reason I mentioned it is because we just recently made the change to the UDC that we're going to require sidewalks on freeways, so...
We wouldn't typically do that. What we do, and here's the difference, so a developer's never going to build a frontage road of a freeway, and they're never going to build the main lane, so we don't include those road sections, so we don't include the associated sidewalk. It's a function of our subdivision where it says, hey, if you plat, that triggers the need to build a sidewalk, but it's not captured in this. As opposed to what we do is, when a developer typically comes in and they're building adjacent to an arterial, they would be obligated to improve that road, build the sidewalk or build the hike and bike trail with it. So it's a bit of a different thing because they don't ever build those roads, so we just left it out. So yeah, it's irrelevant really for the purpose of impact fee, the fact that we just updated the ordinance.
One more question. Why did we leave out Live Oak Road?
What's that?
Why did we leave out Live Oak Road from 30009 to the Parkway? Are we not going to widen that and...
So I think the cross-section of Live Oak...
We've got the extension of Live Oak and then Live Oak going to Maskey, but we don't...
I think we don't add capacity of it, I think...
It was a two-to-a-two, I believe.
Yeah, it's a two-to-a-two. So while the road is there and it's in bad shape, it needs to probably be redone in a way, it doesn't add capacity because of kind of what's there, it's in good enough shape to move it, because I think...
Is that within the city limits?
It's in the city limit, Chad, it's down here. Let me verify that and we'll give you an answer, but I think that's what it is.
Is it going to remain a two-lane road or are we going to make it a three?
I think it's a, I think it stays as a two.
I think, yeah.
Let me verify that and get your answer, but I think it stays as a two, and while it needs to be spruced up, fixed up, it doesn't, we don't add capacity with it when we do those improvements, as we would with some of the other roads that are overly narrow in spots.
So you're saying it needs to be a better road, not a bigger road?
That's really, I believe that's the answer, we'll confirm that and give you that.
Is that one of these, is that Live Oak?
It's that one.
Collector class facility?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's the answer, so let us...
And now I can't find it.
Could you put that, you had that one slide not too far back that had the two-tall, it was a bar chart, and you had the two-tall bar, that one, yes, thank you.
Oops, let me go to this one.
Right there.
Making sense, is it?
Well, I think so. So the bar on the left there, that would be, what I'm trying to wrap my mind around, I guess, is when you say you take the deficiency and you net that out of the CIP.
That's correct.
Where I'm looking at the dollar, the dollar sign, the very top of that, for example, is, would that be 98 million or the 98 million is from?
98 million is from the very bottom, all the way up.
Okay.
92 million is from just above the diagonal.
Right, so the deficiency is included?
That's right, that's the cost that we already lost. It's gone, we will never recover that.
Right, and that's why you keep saying that if we build this, it takes care of the deficiency.
Because we're building a system of improvements that'll, in theory, fix it, yeah. You know, that's really kind of a good point there, you know, 6 million from 988 to 922, you know, that's costs that'll never get recovered, because, there it is. Because of existing, and that'll, as the community continues to grow and cut through traffic, you know, when we do the tube counts later, we may lose more of that, and it's just because roadways are an open system of improvements. Everyone's entitled to road. It's different from water wastewater, closed system, you know, how much capacity is being provided, and allocate that cost out amongst the users, roads is just open.
Yeah, we control what goes through the pipes, we can't control who drives on our roads and streets, yeah.
Yeah, and we've seen anywhere from 15% to 25% background traffic. Ultimately, as the network gets built in, you'll lose some of that capacity, yeah.
Well, 1103 is a good example, we, you know, Shirts, there's only what?
Two miles.
Yeah, two miles of that in the city, and the rest of that's all in somebody else's jurisdiction.
Right, and that'll be a big regional facility, and if that was in the program, and Shirts contributed 20% of that, we were covering just a little bit from new development because getting consumed by all the traffic running through the facility.
All right, any other comments or questions?
I'd personally just like to thank you for, these are probably two of the best reports I've seen since I've been up here for seven or eight years.
Oh, no, you got hung up on deficiency, we got to have to work on that one.
No, it's just something I need to understand, figure it out myself, but anyway, no, thank you. Very, very good reports, appreciate the effort that you put into it.
Mr. Chairman, so are we looking for a, we want, we need a motion then to forward this to city council?
A motion to make a recommendation to city council.
I'm not sure how to make the motion, I'd like, I'll make the motion that we forward, and are we looking for city council approval? Is that what we need?
For them to consider that as part of a public hearing. So motion to consider approval of the LUA and CIP as drafted for advancing for a public hearing, or advancing to the city council.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion of what he just said. Can you get, is that good enough over?
Motion to consider...
That we forward that, yeah, I'll make, I'll move that this commission forward the LUA and CIP to city council for their consideration and a public hearing.
All right, have a motion and a second. Motion by Mr. Outlaw, second by Dr. Pinchorn. All right, any other comments or questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman. To Brian, do I have an open question with you or on...
We looked at it, we think that, let us go back and talk to Eddie and verify, but in looking, the cross-section of that road is generally what it is, and so an improvement wouldn't add capacity, which is why we think we left it off here and we'll verify that.
Yeah, because what I noticed was, the Maskey Road from 1518 to Oak Street is going to be three lanes, and then all of a sudden it goes back to two from Maskey to, from Oak Street to Shirts Parkway.
It switches, yeah, that's...
So is there going to be any decrease in traffic on that segment or...
Part of it again is we've got existing development on both sides, so we're limited in terms of what we can fit through there. I don't recall if we have that.
Sorry, the difference is that the section between 30009 and Shirts Parkway is residential collector, and from Shirts Parkway to Maskey is a commercial collector, which has three lanes versus two lanes for residential.
Well, it can't be from Shirts Parkway to Maskey because it's only identified as two lanes.
Oh, I apologize, it's from the realignment, the realigned extension of Live Oak is residential, and then when it turns into the existing Maskey, that's when it's commercial.
We buy that?
Yeah, I mean, because if you think of the land uses where it's running now, it's got Dietz Creek on one side, it'll have Benzell Farms on the other, which makes sense for residential, and once it hits the curve, you know, we'll see what happens on both sides. You've obviously got the soccer, but either side of the soccer could be commercial, and south of the soccer will be commercial. I'm not going to stand up here and say that somebody 15 years from now isn't going to be there going, yeah, man, that road section really needs, that's the stuff that you make assumptions about and it could be the case. But the reason it's not included here is because of that width not being beyond what it is today.
And our intent is that from 3009 to Shirts Parkway, that's going to still be a residential collector?
Because of the land uses on either side, yeah.
All right, I'm good, thank you.
All right, and we have a motion and a second on the floor? Any other comments or questions? All right, call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And I believe that concludes our agenda for the evening.
That is correct. We will reconvene in January, I think it was January 10th, but before then, you'll receive a draft report of all the calculations, et cetera, and we'll be talking about it at that time, so, thank you very much.
All right, meeting adjourned at 7:12.